It is now five o'clock and I open our regular meeting. And can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember McEchrone.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. And this is a time when we have public comments. I don't see anyone here that needs to approach the council. So at this time, I will have the attorney give us the declaration of the closed session items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have four closed session items this evening. Two are existing, sorry, three are existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. The case names and the parties set forth on the agenda. Item A is for the Airport Authority. The other two existing litigation items are for the City Council and they are SEC versus City of Victorville and Washington Fund LLC versus City of Victorville. The fourth item is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.D1. And to the extent there is, to the extent there's reportable action, we will report that either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we will, I close this meeting and we will recess to our executive session. Now, we will have closed session announcements by our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had four closed session items this evening. Three were existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. The case names and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. One of those items was with respect to the Airport Authority. The other two were city council items. The fourth item was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4. There is reportable action with respect to item C, that is existing litigation in the cases, Washington Fund LLC et al. versus the City of Victorville. The reportable action is that the city has given direction to file a cross complaint against Washington Fund LLC to recover transient occupancy taxes. The vote on that was a unanimous vote of all members of the city council. That's the only reportable action with respect to the closed session.
Thank you. Now, we have some, let's see, we will have the invocation and the pledge. The invocation will be given by Pastor Davis and the pledge by Chief Sam Lucia. And so, we will start with our invocation and then remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Would you pray with me? Father God in heaven, we thank you so much for this great country we live in, the United States of America. Lord, we thank you for all of the rich history in this country that's brought us to this point. We thank you for civil government. We thank you for each of these leaders, Lord, who make sacrifices in order to serve on this council. And so, Lord, we just pray that your wisdom would be upon them tonight. The decisions they face are oftentimes not easy. And, Lord, it's easy to point fingers and scoff and criticize, but, Lord, tonight, we lift them up to you and pray that you grant them wisdom that's beyond their years and that you would speak your discernment into them as they make their decisions. Lord, we just pray that the City of Victorville would prosper, it would become a safer city, that it would become a city that's economically strong and a city, Lord, rich in values that leans on you and trusts in you. Just bless each of these leaders, we pray, tonight and all the decisions they face. And I pray that we would all be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to become angry. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we have two presentations this evening. The first one will be a certificate of recognition for Jared Garcia. You see here. This certificate of recognition is being presented to Jared Garcia for his outstanding athleticism and for achieving third highest ranked American male in the 2014 Team USA BMX Cycling Competition. Jared was born and raised in Victorville and is currently competing for three Olympic, Olympian spots in his sport. Congratulations from the City of Victorville and the City Council. And we also have a second one here, and this one is for Donald Schultz. This proclamation is being presented on behalf of the entire city council to recognize Donald D. Schultz, who has been elected to the position of President of the California-Hawaii Elks Association for the year 2015 and 16. Mr. Schultz has been honored by his lodge as Exalted Ruler twice and has also been honored as Officer of the Year and Honorary Life Member. Congratulations from the city council and also the City of Victorville. And the first item is B1. A City Council of the City of Victorville Public Hearing Regarding Housing and Community Development (HCD) Grants for Fiscal Year 2015-2016 as follows. I'm not sure if I have any cards. Hold on a second.
Madam Mayor, there's a concern that I have with the council members that may have potential conflicts of interest on this matter. Councilmember McEchrone and Councilmember Kennedy in the past have represented and have dealings with some of the clients that sometimes apply for this. So, in order to err on the side of caution, I would recommend that they recuse themselves from this discussion.
Very well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, Madam Mayor. If they've had, what kind of relationships or associations with applicants?
I believe in the past, they have represented some of the entities that have and may be applying for the CDBG grants.
Is there a list given to the council of those individuals who are applicants?
I believe there's a list attached to the agenda item. Is there?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
I don't know what it means, have an association or dealing with those individuals. I...
In the past, they have, again, erred on the side of caution and voluntarily recused themselves, so...
Well, I have, I mean, it's pretty well known that I have low and low-income housing and deal in housing. I don't know if I've dealt with the individuals or not. I mean, we apply for grants, we apply to offset loans, we do a whole lot of things, but I didn't see any list.
And to, I, you know, I guess the assumption is on the two council members that have recused themselves, they have in the past had those dealings. We can look into it when we find out what the definitive list is with respect to any concerns you may have.
Since I've dealt with individuals who may be with those organizations, but I haven't actually officially dealt with the organization, I do not believe it's a conflict of any kind and so...
I agree with that.
For the record, I will stay involved.
Okay, I'll continue. To receive citizens and agency comments regarding the city's needs and strategies for the 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan and consider comments from the consultation meeting that was held on November 12, 2014, and allow prospective applicants an opportunity to share their needs. I do have some cards here. The first one is Kate Tebow. And after Ms. Kate, then I have Matthew Coughlin, so be prepared to come up. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kate Tebow and I am with Grid Alternatives. We are a nonprofit solar contractor and installer. We are requesting CDBG funds to provide solar access, access to solar technology to the City of Victorville's most vulnerable low-income population. With over 20% of the city residents at or below the poverty level and a foreclosure rate in the inland empire that is twice out of the national average, an energy-efficient home can provide low-income families additional income to provide further mortgage payments, foods, and other necessary items. If awarded, this funding will be used to install solar for four low-income families who cannot otherwise afford this technology. Each low-income household served will save approximately 75% on their electricity bills or about 20, between $25,000 and $30,000 during the system's lifetime, helping families gain some protection against the rising utility costs and helping them to become more self-sufficient. In addition to providing savings to the families who receive the solar installations and providing a clean energy product that benefits the community as a whole, Grid Alternatives will provide approximately 20 community volunteers and job trainees with hands-on solar installation experience. Grid Solar Installation serve as a classroom on the roof where job trainees learn in a real-world environment and gain experience which can help them ultimately obtain long-term employment in the solar industry, an industry that is growing at a rate of 23% a year. Grid has already completed four projects in the City of Victorville for a total of 16.4 kilowatts. These four projects will provide a lifetime savings of about $130,000 to the homeowners, eliminate 430 tons of greenhouse gases, which is equivalent to taking 77 cars off the road for a year or planting 10,116 trees. I would like to thank you for your time and consideration of our application, and I can take any questions if you have them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. State your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Coughlin. I'm the Executive Director of Moses House Ministries. Thank you for your time. Moses House Ministries has submitted three applications for projects under CDBG funding for the fiscal year 2015-2016 that address two priority areas of the 2012-2016 Strategic Plan for the City of Victorville. Two of those applications are under Priority Area 12, addressing public service needs that are formulated as collaboratives, one between Moses House Ministries and the Rose of Sharon to provide emergency resources and referrals to families that are in need, namely diapers, formula, access to housing programs, and transportation to and from services. Another collaborative would be with Moses House Ministries and Community Health Action Network to provide car seat safety installation and education for Victorville resident families, ensuring that they have the appropriate understanding of how to safely install car seats. Families with inappropriate equipment, as deemed by California law, will have the opportunity to have equipment replaced, ensuring that their families are safe. Under Priority Area 13, Expanding Economic Base and Promoting Greater Employment Opportunities for Victorville Residents, Moses House has submitted a project to increase our employment education program, providing onsite training for volunteers to go through a training program, allowing them access to understanding the needs of employers in the retail industry of the high desert, working with those local businesses to provide placement opportunities for employees, trying to assist families that are receiving county assistance and other public funding to become self-sufficient and self-sustaining. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Gregory Barnes, and after that will be Cassandra Black.
Good after, pardon me, sorry about that. Good evening, Madam Mayor and respected council members. My name is Gregory Barnes and I am the Administrator for St. John of God Healthcare Services Samaritan's Helping Hand. St. John of God Healthcare Services Samaritan's Helping Hand has been a proud member of the Victor Valley for over 30 years. We provide a valuable service to the community that deals with the homelessness, people who are facing economic hardships, and individuals and families that battle with substance abuse. We have collaborated with, we have collaborated with and continue to collaborate with many other local agencies and nonprofit organizations such as Victor Valley Community Services Council, High Desert Outreach Center, Desert Communities United Way, Kaiser, Victor Valley Rescue Mission, and many, many more. Since our program began, we have assisted over 11,000 people with substance abuse issues and over 30,000 people with utility and rental assistance and food. I want to thank you for your partnership in assisting and funding us this past year, so you know we have met every goal that we attended. That's why I stand before you tonight and I ask you again for your consideration of approval of our application for CDBG funding. With those funds, we will be able to ensure that seniors and veterans will not lose their homes or go without utilities and that no child goes hungry. On behalf of the Brothers of St. John of God, St. John of God Healthcare Services and Samaritan's Helping Hand, I want to thank you for your time, thank you for your service, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cassandra Black and I'm with San Bernardino Sexual Assault Services and I serve as the Counselor for the High Desert Communities. And I'm just here to briefly give you some feedback on just what we're planning to do for 2015. And basically, in addition to our normal services of counseling, advocacy, and prevention, we're planning workshops that will be available to parents and caregivers and others that have children because we find that there is a need to educate on effective communication skills and on how to actually demonstrate for the child those protective methods. And we're doing so with our program that is not only for our clients, but it is ideal for community organizations that have parenting classes. We're also doing a teen advocacy program, and it's to start this spring. It will be teen-driven with trained teens, and it will also have trained community peer leaders. So with that, we're planning to mentor our teens for peer leadership in their respective schools, in organizations that they may already be affiliated with, as well as within the community. We are also going to offer an art of healing program for women survivors and teen female survivors where they can use creative methods to be able to express their emotions. We actually took this particular program into the Victor Valley Federal Prison and we had great response, so we will continue doing that now as part of their curriculum. And again, this is something that we do offer to other community organizations. We had our very first male support group and it went very well. We collaborated with St. John of God and the input was fantastic. So we do plan to continue our men's support group this year as well. So we have a very busy plan and we just want to thank you for the support in the past and for any support we get in the future because not only are we serving our clients, but we're empowering our community and educating them with skills so that they can support us in making this community safer. So thank you so much. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have, let's see, I have Jimmy Waldron and then Mitch, Mitch Nakason will be next.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Waldron. I'm here on behalf of High Desert Homeless Services. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued support in our facility. I'm here because we have two applications for the CDBG funding this year. Our first one is the ongoing project that we've had. In the past year, we were home to over 500 residents of the high desert. We provided many services besides just shelter. We have provided a service, we have an employment specialist that works directly with the clients, helping to give them the skills that they need in order to get back into the job environment. We help them with their interview skills, resume building skills, cover letters. And then, in addition to that, with the influx of anticipated homeless, when Sheriff's Hope Project becomes full effect and they start to close down the Mojave River, we'll probably be seeing an additional amount of people, homeless individuals seeking services with us. And our other project is a repair project for the existing building in the homeless shelter. We have a deteriorating wall due to some water damage. I would like to thank you for considering us for funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
I'm Mitch Nikosia with the Victor Valley Community Services Council. Sorry, you couldn't read my writing because I was in a hurry. The Victor Valley Community Services Council has been around the high desert since 1956. We've been servicing the community with a variety of programs. We've actually helped establish the homeless shelter, the domestic violence shelter, the High Desert Center, Desert Communities United Way. A lot of services that exist today came out of our organization. Today, I stand here because we are going to collaborate with St. John of God once again this year for CDBG funds from Victorville. We do receive on our own CDBG from the City of Asparia and Town of Apple Valley to service their citizens, and we continue to service the citizens of Victorville as well with our free programs. We provide free transportation, free minor home repair, free friendly visiting, homemaker assistance, and a senior center activity, all for low-income senior citizens to keep them healthy and safe in their homes. But with St. John of God, we're collaborating for utility assistance, so the money that we get with our collaboration, or actually, we will have set aside, to directly help senior citizens that are low-income in the City of Victorville to pay for their electricity, their water, their utility in general, because that becomes a very strenuous thing when they have a bill that's past due and they are threatened with utility being shut off. Sometimes, it's a matter of choosing between feeding themselves or paying their utility bill. And so, we're happy to have received that money last year from you through St. John of God, and we're hoping to be funded again this year to help our senior citizens in the City of Victorville with utility assistance. I will say that the few nonprofits that I've seen since I walked in, we collaborate, all of us, we work really well together here in the high desert. We also work with sexual assault services. We go out to train kids about protecting themselves. We worked with the homeless shelter. We do a lot of referral services. And the people that are here asking for your assistance, the agencies that need your help with CDBG funds, they do a good job and they really help service your community in a way that the city cannot, down to the actual individual that needs a service. So, I just want to say that you should be proud of the agencies that exist here and help the community in the high desert in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I now close the public hearing B1 and I open public hearing B2. A City Council of the City of Victorville Public Hearing to hear arguments for and against the granting of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to secure transportation for a non-emergency medical transportation business is set forth in Resolution Number 15-003 entitled. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville finding and declaring that the public convenience and necessity justify and require the granting of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to secure transportation. And I don't have any cards for this particular item here. Do we have a motion?
Move.
It would be appropriate to close the public hearing first, Mayor Garcia.
You're correct. I close public hearing B2.
I want to second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox to adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I now open public hearing B2. A City Council of the City of Victorville Public Hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a six-month extension for the interim ordinance imposing a moratorium on new money service businesses is set forth in ordinance number 2330 entitled. Second extension for the urgency interim ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville imposing a moratorium on permitting and zoning action relating to new money service businesses.
For the record, Madam Mayor, I think you mentioned this is B2. It's actually a public hearing for item B3.
I failed to mention B3.
You mentioned B2 by mistake.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, this is public hearing B3. Do we have a motion?
Or any public comment? And if not, we should then close the public hearing.
Any public comments? I don't see anyone.
I have a question of staff, Madam Mayor. This, can, what was the reason for the further extension? Isn't this the second one or have I got a different company?
This is, well, it's not a company. It's a code amendment. But the reason for the extension here is, if you recall, the business that was attempting to locate brought up, we thought, some good points about the title loans with regard to the fact that there's no cash that exchanges hands. That was one of the concerns. So, staff is still researching those items. We're not prepared to bring this forward as a permanent code amendment at this time, but we should be able to get that research done and bring it back one way or another within the next six months.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Are we ready for a motion?
Has the public hearing been closed, Mayor Garcia?
No, I close the, I close the public hearing on item B3. Do we have a motion?
Motion would be appropriate.
I move that we grant the extension for six months on this urgency ordinance number 2330.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy, to waive further reading of the ordinance as read by Mayor Garcia, ordinance number 2330, and to adopt the ordinance. And since this item does require a four-fifths vote as opposed to a simple majority, I will ask for a roll call vote on this item. Councilmember Kennedy?
Aye.
Councilmember McEchrone?
Aye.
Councilmember Negretti?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cox?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
I, here. Right.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now, we go into our consent calendar. Being that this is a routine items, unless there is an item to be removed for further discussion, also, I believe we, I'm sorry, let's see, we do have a...
There is a revision to this.
There is a revision to this.
Yes, Mayor Garcia, on consent calendar item C4, there is a revised version of ordinance number 2329 regarding the no-smoking ordinance. The version that's on the dais and that has been provided to the public since the posting of the agenda is actually the correct version of the ordinance as introduced by the council at the last meeting.
Thank you.
I'll move consent calendar.
I believe we do have, in addition to... No, you're right.
That's the only revision, I believe, to the consent.
Yeah, that's the only revision that we have. Okay.
A second.
Motion by Mr. McEchrone, second by Mr. Kennedy, to adopt this consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And now we go into our written communications. And we have item D1. Request the City Council approve the award of a construction contract to Rightway Roof Corporation in the amount of $156,097 for restoration to the City of Victorville Library Roof.
Before we make a motion, Madam Mayor, I have a question of staff. This is a bid that recommended the award for the roof. Do we have the money in the library fund or is it, it's a CDBG grant? Does that cover all of it? Have any matching fund requirements? Just a question on fund availability.
My understanding is that there is no matching funds required. This is a CDBG grant, similar to the speakers in public hearing item. These monies are provided by the federal government. And since the library is in the project area for CDBG, eligible for CDBG funds, this is something that would have been approved last year, if I recall.
And it's my understanding, looking at staff, that this is an accumulation of funds over the last two years for CDBG grants.
Okay. That was particularly earmarked for that.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Then I shall move.
Any other comments? Anybody have any other questions?
There is a second.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of item D1.
There was a motion made by Mr. Cox to approve. So would you like to second the motion, Mr. Kennedy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D2. Request the City Council approve the payment of the 2015 League of California Cities membership in the amount of $25,894.91.
Madam Mayor, just a question for staff, not just for my edification, but everybody's. It's a big membership fee to pay. What do we get from the League of Cities?
A lot of things that are not particularly quantifiable. The League works on all cities' behalf to either propose or oppose legislation that affects cities. There are intangible benefits when our staff have, let's say, a new code amendment that the council once looked at. We have the ability to inquire of all the cities in the League through the League of Cities and get successful code sections from the other cities. Pick out the parts that we like, toss the parts that we don't like, and put it together at a relatively inexpensive way, a very efficient way. The League's priorities are in the agenda item. They're somewhat broad. I'm not going to read them to you, but the League does a lot of good work for all the cities in California, to my knowledge. I don't, I'm not aware of any cities that are not members of the League at this point. Thank you. This is a budgeted item. It just happens to be about $895 higher than I could approve under the authority given to me under the municipal code, so that's why it's on your agenda.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3. Request the City Council appoint Councilmember Negrete as the city's delegate to the SCAG General Assembly. And also Jim Cox as the alternate. Any comments?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4. Request the City Council adopt Resolution Number 15-004 superseding Resolutions Number 11-039 and 11-050 authorizing the city manager or designate to execute contracts for the power purchases, including the supply of electricity and bundled renewable energy credits, RECS, and all related energy products and services under the conditions and limitations specified herein. Resolution Number 15-004 entitled. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California superseding Resolution Number 11-039 and 11-050 authorizing the city manager or designate electricity and all related energy products, including unbundled renewable energy credits under the conditions and limitations specified herein.
I have a question of the city manager.
Yes.
This is for the, to authorize the city manager or designate. Is that, or council's designate, or name designate, or your designate?
Theoretically, I could designate someone else to make this purchase. I have no intention of doing that unless I'm out of town or something like that, if I name an acting city manager.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure. I have a concern. I'm just notice that a designate and it's not named. And I know that you would never do it, but if we adopt this, what keeps Doug from losing his mind and propping up the local drunk and authorizing him to sign this? I guess it has to be more definitive than just a designate.
Well, certainly it is set up that he would have the discretion as to who would be the designate. That's the way typically when you have a situation like this where you're designating or giving the ability to somebody to designate a third party, you are giving them that discretion. So, you know, you could put a limitation on it. It'd be a designate that would be a department head, perhaps. Or Doug, I'd look to you if there's a recommendation of somebody you'd want to limit it to, somebody in the utilities department.
Could we make the designate subject to the approval of the council?
Not in this case, actually. The major purpose behind these items over the years is because they're, from time to time, we have an opportunity to purchase electric power. And we don't have a whole lot of time to make a decision. And getting a council meeting together would cause us to lose what could be a very lucrative power purchase opportunity that's facing us.
This probably requires a little additional explanation on your part as to why would we be buying power? What do we do with power?
Sure. This is for us to buy wholesale power and then sell it to the customers within two specific areas at this point, the Foxborough area and at SCLA, where the city has its own electric customers. We don't serve homes. We don't serve most of the city. But we do have a couple of areas where we buy wholesale power and sell it retail to those customers. This was all part of initiatives started in, back in the year 2000, before I was here, to try to make utilities an attractive option for businesses considering to come here. As a result of these purchases and these long-term purchase agreements, we are able to offer rates that are lower than surrounding cities. And it makes us more competitive.
And the fact that we were unable to complete the Foxborough Power Plant didn't relieve us of the duty to provide that electricity that we had committed to. So instead of producing it out of our own plant, we're buying it and then selling it.
That's correct. That's correct. Actually, if hindsight were available, we would probably have gone down this road from the start rather than attempting to build the plant altogether.
And if I'm not mistaken, Doug, I think we have a pretty good prospect of generating enough profit off of that sale to retire that remaining debt that we're still saddled with on that project.
We are doing that now on an annual basis. And we expect, as our utility customer base grows, to continue to be able to do that, yeah.
If I might ask a follow-up question to that. I noticed we're superseding resolutions that have occurred before. And I believe those previous resolutions had given same type of authority, did they not?
They are similar authority. They were, for whatever reason, were at 24 million, has a hard cap at 24 million. This would be moving that to 25 million over a five-year period. So it's more of a rolling number rather than being a hard cap that we would have to come back to the council for. So essentially, it would, it doesn't really change the amount of the authority, except slightly. But it essentially lets it roll for five years to where the purchase authority, the city manager, doesn't exceed $25 million over a five-year period, whereas previously, the resolutions that are being superseded capped at 24 million total.
Okay, but with respect to the designate portion, is that similar or the same?
It's the same. That's the same. That has nothing to do with it.
My only point there, and then also a question to our city attorney, is that if the scenario that Mr. Cox brought up occurred, could we not call a special council meeting and remove that authority immediately? Absolutely. Okay. I just, you know, obviously, he's our city manager. We've got to trust him. I just think we ought to go ahead and allow him to do this.
But shouldn't it be the city manager, deputy city manager, or designate? I mean, wouldn't it automatically, if you're unavailable, wouldn't it?
Yeah. If I'm not available, Mr. Metzler as the assistant city manager is the acting city manager. That's part of his duties. So at that point, he would be the designate. You know, in theory, you know, as the utility grows, perhaps that designate might become some kind of a utility director someday, position we don't have right now. Right now, I fill that role, many others that I fill for the city. So it's, I understand your concern, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, because it is a little bit vague. I think it's there on purpose and at the discretion of the city manager, provided I don't, I think you said, go crazy and designate a drunk.
That's not going to happen.
I know it's not going to happen.
But, you know, we have, we have an individual who does a lot of negotiating and it may be a, reach a point in time where that individual sees it absolutely necessary to obtain the authority. You're not available. You grant it. That's not a city employee.
That's correct.
So I'm assuming then this would extend to your designate period.
You know, if it would, if it would relieve this issue, perhaps as part of the motion, there could be direction given to the city manager that any designate must, at a bare minimum, be a city employee.
That's covered it. That would be sufficient.
And we have a motion.
I'll move approval of item D4.
D4.
With that, with that...
I'll second. Thank you.
With that add-on.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy to approve, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we have item D5. Request the City Council award National Auto Fleet Group the piggyback purchase of one 2015 Kenworth water truck cab. Well, I guess I'll read the whole thing. T370 water truck cab chassis in the total amount of $91,203.84 under the National Joint Powers Alliance and JPA Contract Number 102811 and is budgeted for in the fiscal year 2014-2015 Capital Improvement Project CIP Budget. Any comments or...
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckren to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D6. Request the City Council award National Auto Fleet Group the piggyback purchase of one 2015 Kenworth T370 low-bed tractor truck with hydraulic system in the total amount of $101,981.38 under the National Joint Powers Alliance and JPA Contract Number 102811 and is budgeted for in the fiscal year 2014-2015 Capital Improvement Project CIP Budget.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckren, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
D7. Request the City Council authorize staff to pay, send back approximately $2,836,933 from the Fund Number 352, the road service development impact fee, to pay off the balance owed for the city's share of the construction cost for La Mesa Road and Esqali Road interchange. Any questions or discussions?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is probably one of the most exciting agenda items we've had in a little while. Let me kind of run through it briefly. Just disappeared from my screen. That's all right. So essentially, the city entered into an agreement with Sandbag. I'll blame Sean for that. Entered into an agreement with Sandbag to, Sandbag will retain our road maintenance dollars. I didn't need it. I'm okay. Will retain our road maintenance dollars until such time as the La Mesa and Esqali interchange is fully funded from Sandbag's perspective. The resulting loan, since we started out with a $10 million down payment, would have been roughly 10 and a half, 10.2 million dollars. And what staff discovered just about a week ago was that we actually had enough money remaining in the development impact fees account to go ahead and pay that off now rather than continuing to have our road maintenance dollars withheld. In doing that, assuming the council approves that, which I don't know why you wouldn't, it means that those maintenance dollars that we didn't think we would start receiving for another 18 months begin flowing literally next month. That puts an exciting, some exciting options in front of the council that I'll let Sean go through. But essentially, we get to the point that we can start doing some major road maintenance this calendar year, probably looking at three or four projects over the next two to three years. And then beyond that, additional, very large-scale projects that we've needed for quite some time, since long before the loan was even made. So I'll go ahead and kick it over to Sean to go through the, some of the details briefly. But I do want to, as Sean goes into one of his rather famous, infamous PowerPoint presentations, I do want to say for the record that Councilman McEckren specifically requested a lengthy PowerPoint presentation with pictures and charts of all the roads that you guys will be considering prioritizing this evening.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Albertson. Mayor Garcia, members of the council, very pleased to present this presentation to you. First slide is basically just covering what Doug has just covered. The half share, if you will, that, of the cost of the interchange that the city is bound to pay from development impact fees was a little over $20 million. And we had deposited at the time $10 million of development impact fee monies that we had. So that was about a balance of 10.2 million at the end of construction, when all costs were determined. In the meantime, Sandbag had retained our Measure I funds to the tune of $7.4 million. And so as Doug noted, when we called last week to find out how much money had been collected, we were very pleasantly surprised to find out that we only owed about $2.8 million in, to pay off the interchange. So the amount in our fund balance for road fees was 3.6 million. So we can easily afford to pay the 2.8 million and leaving us a balance of about 3/4 of a million, which means that we have met our obligation in paying for the interchange. As Doug noted, that means that we have a revenue stream that would return to us through the Measure I. We estimate that we have about an annual revenue of $4.4 million. But we do have to fund the programs for the maintenance of the traffic signals, the traffic signs and striping of about $1.8 million, which would leave excess funds of about $2.6 million available for street rehabilitation projects on an annual basis. If we take a look at the historic road diff revenues, going back to 2007, as you can see, an astronomical $6 million annually in 2008. We don't expect that to return anytime soon. So we, what we did was take a look at the past four years' worth of road diff revenue. And it averages out at about $1 million. So if we anticipate $1 million per year in road diff, then we have the ability to supplement the amount that would be available for road rehabilitation by about a million... the amount that would be available for road rehabilitation by about a million dollars a year. And the way it works is that with seven point four million in Measure I utilized for helping to pay for the interchange, that Measure I has to be, if you like, exchanged for road diff that we would collect in the, in the future. So if we have a check for a million dollars that we send to Sandbag in road diff, they would then exchange a million dollars in Measure I, in exchange for that, if you will. And we can keep doing that up to the point of recouping the seven point four million in Measure I. That could be seven years, or it could be two or three years, depending on how much road diff that we are actually collecting. So if we go back to the amount that's available for rehabilitation in Measure I funding, if we supplement that then with the road diff exchanged for Measure I, we can actually supplement that up to about three point six million annually, assuming a million dollars per year for about seven years. That leaves us with, the second part of the question is, what would the council like to see done first with the, this new revenue stream? We believe we can immediately fund a project of about two point one million dollars. Staff is prepared to move ahead with the plans and specifications to get a rehabilitation project out to bid. We would anticipate, a rehabilitation project does not have a huge amount of engineering in it, and we would be very hopeful that we could actually get a project into construction by the summer of 2015. The, the way we look at roads and their condition is through an indexing called the pavement condition index. And the, we've basically brought before you four projects that we would nominate, not in any particular order, but I think that's something that we would like council to, to pick the most visible project. So Industrial and Silica, Bear Valley Road, Amethyst Road, and La Mesa Road are four major arterial streets. They carry a lot of traffic. They're highly visible. They're all in need of repair. The limits would be, this would be the Bear Valley Road from Balsam to the I-15 ramp. Industrial Boulevard and Silica between Hisperia Road and Bear Valley Road. On the west side of the freeway, then Amethyst Road from Bear Valley north to Palmdale Road, and La Mesa Road. Obviously, there was a portion of that recently constructed with new interchange to El Rio Road, so it'd go from El Rio West to Mesa Linda Avenue. On, on this project as well, it is to be noticed, noted that there is another project that we're working through with Caltrans to install a traffic signal at three ninety-five. And there's about six hundred and sixty feet of pavement missing. That project would put in that missing link, and we think that's going to draw a lot more traffic on La Mesa Road. The next series of slides is just photographs of the condition of the pavement. This one in particular, you can see on the left, you can see where the crack sealing efforts have been performed, and new cracking has appeared then over time in the, in the number one lane. The potholes, it's a constant maintenance problem. These are all on Industrial Boulevard, by the way. A mixture of cracks and patches. It's just ongoing deterioration of the, the road. This is looking west on Silica. Again, there's a lot of cracking. This is indicative of pavement failure, base failure. Lots of cracks that have been sealed, but as you can see, they're opening up again. And that just leads to water intrusion and deterioration of the, the base material beneath the road. This is the famous Bear Valley Road, and the rutting that has been caused by the very, very heavy truck traffic. And if you like, a slightly oily asphalt mix, and in the hot weather, the combination of all of that causes the asphalt to move. This shot is trying to indicate that it traverses multiple lanes, but it's the same issue. The pavement actually moves under the loading. This slide, you can see where the, some of this rutting was ground down to try and minimize that rutting behavior of the asphalt. And it's very, very difficult to change lanes without the ruts interfering with your steering. This is Bear Valley right at Mariposa Road. So again, you can see where the, the rutting has come back after being ground off some time ago. And taking a look at the, the shoving of that asphalt, to just take a look at the, the paint lines, that's the stop bar at Mariposa Road and Bear Valley, and you can see where the paint has migrated on the surface, because that's what the asphalt is doing. It's moving. We're now on Amethyst Road. This is total pavement failure in this section. Again, lots of cracks, pavement failure, rutting. This is cracks that are progressing. The slide, the photograph on the right, maybe a little hard to see, but the, the cracks are starting to appear. And that is basically on the slippy side of the slope. On the left, the, the failure has already occurred. More rutting and cracking, and total pavement failure at this location. This is right at the La Mesa intersection. This is on La Mesa itself, right in front of Liberty School. This is the La Mesa intersection with Amethyst, complete pavement failure in the middle. That's a close-up of what it looks like. There's basically no recovering from that. That basically has to be removed and reconstructed. This is back at Topaz. Again, there's just all sorts of different pipes of failure, potholes and cracks and pavement failure. Again, the early stages of total pavement failure. It's basically beyond recovery. And just more of the same. This is the slippy slope. The, the pavement condition index on the left is what we're gauging the roads that need to be saved, if you will. If you get too far to the right, you're down the slippy slope, and you basically cannot retrieve what's there. You basically have to reconstruct the street. So our goal is always to try and stay above that crosshatch line, and have enough funds to go in and save the pavement and extend the life, rather than slipping to the right-hand side and below that crosshatch area. That's where we basically have to throw away what we've got and reconstruct it from zero. So the request to council tonight is to authorize us to pay off the balance owed on the La Mesa and Isqually interchange, and pick a project, direct staff to move forward immediately with one of these four, and hopefully help us to prioritize number two, number three, number four in the coming years.
I have a next question, Madam Mayor. On Bear Valley Road, I had heard that we had anticipated in the budget, construction, reconstruction of Bear Valley Road from the Wash Westerly?
That's correct.
But the pictures are on, appear to be on the easterly side of I-15.
That's right. It's a different project. The, the project that you're speaking of that was in last year's CIP is about, it's about to go out to bid. The, the plans and specs are about ready.
But that's funded?
That's funded.
That's funded?
Yes.
Second question. Are there different construction standards requirements for truck routes and non-truck routes? And, and there's another portion, you mentioned the ruts on Bear Valley Road, very heavy truck traffic, or very heavy trucks?
Well, there is a weight limitation to trucks legally.
Well, I'm not sure that's being enforced. I've been behind trucks that, huge powerful trucks, and I can barely get away from a stop sign. They're so overloaded. And you note them taking streets to avoid the main streets. And I also noticed that those aren't posted non-truck traffic routes. And other cities do post. Do we post when we know that trucks are taking shortcuts in, through neighborhood areas? They're now using Burning Tree Drive, which is a strictly residential area, rather than going through the busy interchange at Seventh and Green Tree Boulevard. Do we post non-truck traffic routes?
If we are aware of trucks that are habitually using non-truck routes, then we do. For example, Stoddard Wells Road is not a truck route, and we post that non, not a truck route.
It's unfortunate that all of our streets are in such condition that they are. So I'm not, I don't know where you'd start first.
What is the plan for the ruts, the rutted asphalt?
Right now, our belief is that, if you like, the number two and number three lanes, number three lane would be the one adjacent to the curb. So number two and number three has, has the most severe rutting. And we would likely take a look and see if we can do those in concrete, and then repave the number one lane, the one nearest to the left turn. That hasn't been determined yet, but.
Far back. That's, that rutting starts along, Cottonwood?
Yeah, Balsam would be the beginning of the rutting, basically. But I doubt that we would go all the way back to Balsam with a concrete approach. But that's all yet to be determined. Right now, we're basically indicating that we have about two point one million dollars to invest into that section of Bear Valley Road.
I've had some direct complaints to me personally about Bear Valley Road further out, I would say between Amethyst and the three ninety-five, in pretty bad shape. Is that somewhere on the horizon?
There is a, a complete survey of all of our streets that we had a consultant do. And basically, they do a, a drive-by, you know, it's a window survey, basically, that they assign a pavement condition index in conjunction with what they observe and the amount of traffic on that road. And basically, those are ranked, and what we have done is selected the, the most prominent ones from that. So without actually looking it up, I would say that section rates better than the section of Bear Valley that we've chosen.
Was that an answer? Is it on the horizon somewhere? It's not on this group of four.
It's not in this group of four. So i- is it on the horizon? It has to be some time when we have the money to do it, yes.
My concern is, some of those areas look to me like maybe it was poor asphalt lane, you know, maybe the wrong mix, maybe the base material. I'm sure you already looked into that.
Oh, yes.
Since you've had so many different contractors laying asphalt, many times they do a poor job.
The, the.
Especially when you have, you know, heavy trucks through those roads.
The, the history of that, that particular stretch of Bear Valley Road is that there, there was a concern with the oil content in the mix. There were areas of it that were, went out of compliance, and we made the contractor come in and redo those. And there were some areas that were just right on the edge, and that, that was the result. But they, we could not force the contractor to fix something that was within the specification. And it's not just the oil content. It is the combination of being on the high side but within specification on the oil content, but in the aggregate, being on the other, the opposite edge of compliance. And, and the result is you get that oily mix. And, and you'll see it all over the place, not just in, in Victorville. It, it's just, you, you have a, a process of mixing these ingredients, and you do selective testing, but you can't test every ton of asphalt that goes out there.
Yes, that's true.
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Sean, this is great jobs. I think it's great news. I agree with Doug. This is probably the overwhelming number one comment and feedback I get from folks. And I've been on all those roads, and I have to wait and pick the right time to drink coffee on, on those roads as I'm doing my errands and getting about. But certainly, we have limited resources. And, but it, this is positive news. I, I think the overwhelming feedback I got was that we were some time away from this moment. So to bring it forward is great news. Is it fair to say, can you rank these by the actual traffic counts? Is, I would think Bear Valley would be the top, and then, do you have that information?
Yes. By, by far, Bear Valley carries the most traffic of all on the list. It's, it's over fifty thousand vehicles per day on Bear Valley Road, whereas, I may have some numbers here. If I don't have them, Brian may have.
And that's fine. I was just saying, you know, obviously, by the most used, if we could prioritize it, I would recommend it that way unless somebody has something else.
Yes, the, there's no question. Fifty-five thousand vehicles per day on Bear Valley Road. Clearly, the, the highest volume of that group of four. Certainly, that wouldn't be a, a bad choice. Most people are aware of that.
Sean, I, I had asked the city manager earlier if, you know, obviously, you're putting these four in front of us, but in your professional opinion, which of the streets needs it first? I, I'm going to have my opinion, but I am curious, because you're the professional when it comes to this stuff. I mean, what, what, I mean, all of them look, based upon the pictures, and actually, thank you to Doug and, and to you to hearing me. I usually don't ask you to prepare a long PowerPoint presentation, but the pictures say a thousand words, if not more. All those streets need to be replaced tomorrow. I mean, I don't know that asking this council to prioritize one or the other is very, is very productive, because I want to do them all. Understanding, though, what you're asking us to do is put all four of them into the five-year CIP. So without question, we're going to pay back Sandbag. We're going to put all four of those in the CIP. It just becomes a question of which one goes first, you know? And, and I think some of the residential streets where we actually have our residents live make more sense than Bear Valley Road, which is used by probably ninety percent of people from outside of our area. But I understand Bear Valley Road is, is a problem. If you had to pick one from an engineering standpoint that needed to be replaced first, what would the answer to that question be?
Bear Valley Road. It's the lowest PCI rating.
And then what would be your next?
From a practical standpoint, La Mesa Road would be my next one. My engineers may not agree with me, but what I see is in the, in the future, in the very near future, when we make the connection to three ninety-five, we're just going to have a whole lot more traffic on it. And it's just going to.
With the opportunity to relieve some of Bear Valley, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Connect it?
Yes. It, it will. It will offer some relief to Bear Valley Road.
Maybe not at the freeway, but.
Not on the east side of the, of the freeway, but on the west side, yes.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm a novice at this. I just drive those roads. But I, I would have probably chosen Amethyst. But I, I seriously defer to you on this type of stuff. I think you know, the, the folks that you have working with you, for you, are, are going to be, you know, understanding of, of what the deterioration is in the pavement. Bear Valley Road's been a problem for a long time. We all know that. You know, so from my perspective, I, I think what you've indicated, if, if we were to create a priority list, it'd be Bear Valley, La Mesa. I would next think Amethyst, and lastly, Industrial Silica. That's my perspective on the four.
I have a couple. Isn't Industrial and Silica primarily shortcuts?
Yes, the, the, we actually have it signed to encourage people to use that, to relieve some of the congestion that's caused at Bear Valley and Hisperia.
Get to Isqually, La Mesa?
Correct.
What about then, as the other end of that, for people who want to continue on La Mesa to Amethyst, and then have somewhere, Amethyst to Bear Valley, rather than all of it. All of Amethysts need to be rebuilt, but particularly from La Mesa.
Bear Valley.
Somebody needs to consider that. I know trucks are using that now. I know trucks are using that now. And so, La Mesa is going to get worse. And so is that portion. They are going down to the signal and cutting back to Bear Valley. They're coming down Bear Valley and also taking that shortcut again. And that's why I question, what are truck routes? Do we have different standards? Also, where you have an intersection with a tremendous amount of truck traffic, whether it's very heavy truck traffic or very heavy trucks, and they have a turning movement, it actually shifts and moves. And it may be that all those intersections have to be cement?
Concrete, yes.
Concrete. And then, what, about two, one truck length or two truck lengths on the primary lanes and save money in the future? Have we completed any sections, intersections like that, with the exception of Hisparia and Green Tree? Just by road of Green Tree and Green Tree, et cetera?
La Paz and Seventh is a concrete, a full concrete intersection.
Works?
Yes.
Doesn't cost that much more, does it?
It depends on the price of oil.
There was a time not long ago, the concrete was actually about the same price as asphalt.
That's why I was...
That's right.
Yeah, the laying of it is, can't be more expensive. But, you know, so what I heard, just to further the discussion along, it sounds like Bear Valley Road, then La Mesa, then Amethyst, and then industrial silica. Is what seemed to be the consensus, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouths or get involved in your deliberations on it.
If, I'd be willing to turn that into a motion, including paying back Sandbag and doing the other things that are listed here. That way, you have a priority list. That all four projects would be added to the CIP. And obviously, if we get money back into development impact fees that allow us to swap that money out with Sandbag sooner rather than later, it will allow us to move these projects forward that much quicker. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcoran, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, just as a piece of information, the bridge over the BNSF railroad tracks, it's the extension of Green Tree that everyone is so interested in, in the timing of. The funds that we're spending on this could not legally be spent on that bridge, number one. And number two, what we've been telling Apple Valley and the county, and anyone else who will listen, is that because of that, you know, $10.5 million loan, we were looking about 10 years out before we repay that loan, before we could even start collecting money to build that bridge. That's why we've been working with Apple Valley and the county to obtain a Tiger grant, federal funding, because there's just no funding identified. The action you just took will shorten that essentially 10-year horizon down to maybe seven years, give or take, depending on how development impact fees come in. So it doesn't automatically mean we start collecting monies to build that bridge, but it does get us about three years closer than we thought we were going to be.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to D8. Request that Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,233,557 for the Stoddard Wells Pipeline Any comments on that?
Based on the staff recommendation, I saw a move, but I questioned that old bridge, if it's sufficient to hang this on it. Sure, somebody has checked it, but just looks odd, questionable. Does need to be answered now, just...
Yeah. The, yeah, well, we'll take another look. But we're okay. I got a thumbs up from Sean. If you'd like him to come and make any presentation, maybe another PowerPoint, we can arrange it, but I think we're okay.
Second, before he gets up here.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McAcoran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
D9. Request the City Council award a contract to KNC Construction, Inc., of Hisparia, California, in the amount of $42,700 for the rehabilitation of the NSP3 property at 11676 Luna Road,
Approval of D9.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McAcoran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
D10. Request the City Council award a contract to KNC Construction, Inc., of Hisparia, California, in the amount of $25,259 for the rehabilitation of the NSPI, PI, NSPI, PI property at 15146 Ridge Briar Lane, Victorville, California.
Question of the staff. What, the city purchased this, it's now being rehabbed with a proposed contract cost of $25,259. What was the purchase price?
Purchase price, including closing costs, is the number I have, was $179.9 for this property at Ridge Briar Lane.
For approval?
And we're not gonna do these at that price level anymore. Am I clear about that? We're sort of in an agreement on that?
Staff had direction from council last February to basically put all acquisitions on hold. So effectively, over the course of time where we've administered this program, we've bought 40 units and rehabbed about 30, oh gosh, 36 or so. We currently have a remaining inventory of about eight units that are going through that completion or process. What staff is working on is modifying its programs and updating its programs to perhaps come back to this council with some recommendations as to how to use the program a little bit more effectively and efficiently, given today's needs in the local community.
Second, the motion.
Motion by Mr. McAcoran, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move to public comments. City manager and city council reports.
You have some cards I pay for public?
Yes, I do have. I have two cards here. The first one is Al Cotillo. And the next one will be Jerry Loz. Is Al here?
Al?
Mr. Cotillo?
Yep. Well, first of all, I want to say, anybody that votes for the new red light cameras either don't know what the people want in the city or really don't give a damn. Second, I'd like to say, you gotta put an ordinance in about these boom boxes, because I asked my doctor, my ear doctor, what he thought about them. He said, "I've never seen so many five or six-year-olds come in with the worst hearing I've ever heard." So that's up to you to help those little kids grow up with hearing. The most important thing I'm here for is you people should all be trying to get hospitals and doctors up here. You can go to the hospital any day of the week up here, and there's 100 people in the hallway lined up, laying there on gurneys and pain, bleeding and everything else. Any day, take a walk to St. Mary's Hospital. The past couple of days, a guy went, took his girlfriend to the doctor. The doctor told her she got a heart, she could die anytime. They went to the emergency room. They waited eight hours. They went home. She died that night. That's the kind of, and you guys are talking about building houses and bringing more people up here? Give me a break. That's not your priority. Neither was any of that mush. Getting the people of this city taken care of is your priority. And the law you passed to make us sit and wait to all that junk, for us to get up here and speak for a couple of seconds, is a bunch of baloney. But your first priority is to take care of the citizens of this city. And make sure there's enough police, make sure there's enough doctors and hospitals. The last city council that was here really didn't give a damn. All they wanted was DIF fees so they could spend it. And that's what happened with you. If you let somebody else bill too, you'll get rid of the DIF fee so quick, and then you won't have no money to fix the roads anyway. That's what happens in cities. And these builders will go to the next small town and make deals with city council members if they can, only if they can. And they'll build over there. And then, when they get through building over there, they'll go to the next small town and wreck that town. This used to be a beautiful place to live. Now it's like, why don't you guys go drive through Beverly Hills one day? That's what you're making this place.
You have 30 seconds, Mr. Cotillo.
See all the traffic up there. Take care of the citizens of the city first. There's no doctors, there's not enough hospitals up here. My mother has been going to her doctor for two years. She's 94 years old. She's got bronchitis real bad. She's homesick.
10 seconds, Mr. Cotillo.
She has to wait two months to get an appointment with her doctor. She weighs 80 pounds. Thank you for nothing.
Thank you.
All right, I'm Jerry Loz. And yesterday, I was sworn in to run as a sign-in candidate for the state senate district 21, Lancaster, Palm Dale, and all that stuff. We're a little tiny bunch over here, Hisparia and stuff. So if you live in that area, on St. Patty's Day, don't be drinking now. Or if you do, wait till after you sign my name in. Jerry J. Loz. You literally will have to write in. Now Sharon Run is the only one on the other side that I know that's running. Now, we have one that came down yesterday, got his paperwork. He's got till March 3rd to do the work. So it'll be Jerry J. Loz, LAWS, just like when you get tickets, like you know, tickets. Now, by the way, on his little presentation, I back him up 110%. Now, what else we got here? Uh, let's see. Yeah, St. Patty's Day. Oh, in the 1950s, we had a curfew. If you were under 18 years, well, I think back that time was 21, you had to go be home by a certain time, unless you were working, and that you could prove that you were working. We got a problem here. We need to either try to think, we need to think about it anyway, of putting a curfew up that any young adult, under 18, because 18 is a legal age now, under 18, that they're on the streets, whether they're skateboarding or whatever they're doing. You get them home, and get them home, we don't get them home, we can put them at the fairgrounds, their parents can come pick them up. I want you to give that a consideration. Right not too far from where I live at, two black guys came along, put their gun on the window, and said, told the young man that was walking home during daylight, "I'd like to have your cellphone." And he has, and they gave him his cellphone. They didn't beat him up. The crime's not gonna get any better, in my personal opinion, until the saver gets back. That's my personal opinion. So, you know how I feel about gun rights? So by the way, my first one will be when I win in Sacramento, is gun rights. The next one will be tax rights, and your taxes on your car, taxes in the local cities, and so forth. Let's get the money back to the cities where it belongs. And by the way, the federal government has only about five basic things registered, but I'm not running for the US Senate yet. I plan to win the first one. Five things. Ben Franklin, don't make him mad, post office is very important, military's number two, there's about two or three others.
Mr. Loz, you have 30 seconds.
And that's it. There's nothing else, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Now remember, you gotta write the name in.
Thank you.
And I hope you do.
Next is Robert Harriman.
Now I'm in queue for this nonsense.
Good evening, council. Yeah, I'd just like to address a couple of things about the road that we discussed a little while ago on the PowerPoint. If I understood him correctly, the area on Bear Valley Road west of the Wash to Amethyst is already funded. I certainly hope so. That's really bad right there. But I would like to address Amethyst for a second. Amethyst and La Mesa Road also has poor batch design in the asphalt, and it's all lifted just like Bear Valley Road. Excuse me. I propose, and I would like the council to stop and think about, having the intersection there done in concrete, the entire intersection. That would impede about 50 feet in each lane or each side of the road. That intersection doesn't have a traffic signal yet, and that's one of the busiest intersections in the residential city. The West Victorville, I believe, is just as high-density housing as anywhere in the city. And so, every intersection on Amethyst, all the way from Bear Valley Road to Palmdale Road, has a traffic signal, except the first one, which is North Star and Amethyst. So I think if you guys could look into that a little more. Like I said, there's, it needs a signal. And I believe our public works director, whatever his title is, I'm sorry, I forgot, has already looked into the traffic count on that intersection, which he says qualifies it. So if you guys could look at that intersection, please? And then, I'll speak with him afterwards about Bear Valley Road, which, like I said, is west of the Wash to Amethyst, is in dire need. All righty? You guys have a good night.
Thank you very much. Okay, now I think we do need reports from, those are all the cards that I have, so, reports from city manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, just to answer a couple of questions that came up during public comment, from essentially the Wash on Bear Valley Road, Westerly to Amethyst. That project is funded. I don't know if it's out to bid yet. I believe it's gonna be out to bid this week, perhaps next week, next week is the absolute latest. So that project is, was simply waiting for good weather. So that will be done, not only with repaving, but also putting in a storm drain on the north side of the road that will take all that water runoff that has destroyed that road. So that's why that wasn't on your list, was because it's already funded, it's already in the plan, and it should be completed very soon, within a matter of months, hopefully. So the other issue of whether or not to make intersections full concrete intersections for all of the four projects that you prioritize tonight, that'll be something that'll be looked at on a case-by-case basis as they get into the actual design of those, of those streets, the redesign of those streets. So it's something that, given some of the water damage, I think a lot of those intersections are certainly need to be studied to see if that would be worth it from a cost-benefit standpoint. So the projects that you approved are certainly a long ways away from being fully designed and ready to come back. They'll come back to the council for approval when we get through those stages. So we're really looking forward to paving some streets around here.
Thank you. Reports from council, anyone?
Madam Mayor, just want to mention, you and I met with the auditors this last week. We're close to wrapping up that final product. No surprises, no bad news.
No bad news, yes.
They'll be presenting that report, I think, the second meeting in March.
So we're still here.
We are still here.
I want to remind them of that next time they present.
There's no longer going concern.
To tell them, I'd ask you not to say those words, but...
Yeah.
And we will be here.
And that's out of the report, although it still relates to the airport authority.
That's all.
No, it was a very good budget review that we had, so that was very pleasing. Anyone else? Okay, there's no other items before this meeting, so we will be adjourning. Thank you.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
If you could adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, February 10th at 6:00 PM for the workshop regarding the class and comp study and related items?
That's what I have here under adjournment. Meeting adjourned to 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, for the purpose of discussing the classification and compensation study and other employee benefits.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.